Good afternoon, everyone. Today's Tuesday, December 7th, 2021. The time is precisely 2:00 P. M. This is our weekly B O C C business meeting. Attending are Commissioners Duncan, Brooks, and Philios, and I'm going to ask, Stephen, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Can we approve the consent calendar, please?
I move that we approve the consent calendar as listed on our December 7th, 2021 meeting agenda.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. Motion carried. Payables list, please.
I move that we approve the payables for the week of November 29 through December 3rd, 2021, in the amount of $347,897. There are no jury panel payments.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. Changes to the agenda?
Nope.
Hearing none. Moving on. First of our action items, agreement for professional services with J U B Engineers, Solid Waste. JP?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. John Phillips, for the record. The Solid Waste Department recognizes the need to look at improvements for the rural collection waste site in the Athel area. This is due to increased site usage and waste volumes. The department did budget funds to take a look at potential ways to improve efficiencies at the public site. The department has met with J U B Engineers preliminarily, and it is believed that improvements could be made to this site that we already own. But a more in-depth evaluation, as well as rudimentary design work, really needs to be completed before our final recommendation could be made. This is to make certain that the needed improvements will actually fit on the property that we currently own, and that the site will drain properly if we were to pave the site, as well as make sure that access and traffic flow will fit within the boundaries. In summary, the Solid Waste Department requests that you approve and sign this professional services agreement with J U B Engineering Incorporated for $14,400, specifically to evaluate these needed improvements at the rural site. This is within our budgeted amount.
Okay. Any questions for JP?
Nope.
Motion?
I move that we approve the professional services agreement with J U B Engineers for the work at the Athel Rural Collection Site.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. Motion's carried. Second item, grant application for the, for KMPO, Kootenay Metropolitan Planning Organization Resource Management Office. Kim?
Yes, Kim Riley, for the record. Thank you. We're requesting authorization to apply for funding through KMPO for a feasibility study. This would be a requirement if we were to receive the award for the facility and land application that we already came to the board with a couple of weeks ago. If that were to be awarded, a feasibility study would be required. So this would provide the funding for that study.
Okay. Any questions for Kim? Motion? You want to take this one?
Yeah, I can do it because I can just read it. I move that we approve the grant application for KMPO Resource Management Office.
Second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. And the motion's carried. Third item, First Amendment for Professional Services Agreement with Cascadia Rise, a For the Cascadia Rising Exercise 2022 with Welch Resources, LLC, Office of Emergency Management. Sarah?
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. This is Sarah Lefredo, for the record. And so, pretty much, this amendment basically just reflects our transition from a full-scale exercise to a tabletop and a drill for the Cascadia Rising Exercise. And this is just due to the state making some changes on how they are going to carry out the exercise. So we are asking for your approval of the amendment.
Is there no fee change if going from a full scale to a tabletop, I would think, maybe a fee change?
I don't believe there is. We have discussed with Sue Welch and Welch Resources. Because we are pretty much going down to a tabletop and a drill, there shouldn't be many changes that need to be made. But I don't believe there is any fee changes.
Okay.
All right. Motion?
I move that we approve the First Amendment for the Professional Services Agreement for the Cascadia Rising Exercises 2022 with Welch Resources, LLC.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. And the motion's carried. Item four, Public Defender Conflict Contract with the Party of Bose, B O C C. Yeah, Terry, go right ahead.
Terry Johnston, for the record. Ms. Bose is a recent applicant, and her application was reviewed and approved by Judge Christensen and also the Public Defense Committee. She has provided all her insurance documents necessary. So if you approve today, she's ready to go.
Okay. Questions? Motion?
I move that we approve the Public Defender's Conflict Contract with Bose.
Second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. And the motion's carried. Item five, Approve the Replacement Free, excuse me, Replacement Freezer Project. And that's our maintenance organization, K C, for KCSO. Greg?
Tom Reed, for the record.
Okay, go ahead, Tom. Sorry.
This is an update to the freezer project at the jail. I contacted the supplier, and they weren't willing to keep up with the contracted price. So there was an increase. So I went back and got, I found another vendor. It was a little cheaper than them. So I just need to let you know that it's going to end up going over budget, about $2,500.
Okay.
Where is the $2,500?
Coming from?
Coming from, Tom?
I talked to the jail, and it's the jail's budget anyway, so it'll be coming out of there. And they confirmed that it was okay for the increase if you approved it.
Okay.
Motion?
I move that we approve the Replacement Freezer Project in the amount of $38,950 with the excess from jail funds.
Right.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. And the motion's carried. Item number six, Reappoint Mr. Sturgis to the Natural Resource Advisory Board.
Yes. So we're going to have several advisory boards here. And there are two openings. Sturgis reapplied, and he's been doing quite a good job, and he's their chair. And then we have another opening, and so we'll be looking for people to fill that, the remaining opening. But I move, or, well, yeah, I guess I just move that we reappoint Jamie Sturgis for the term of January 1st, 2022, through December 31st, 2024.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. And the motion's carried. Thank you. Another reappointment, Harris to the Waterways, Doug Harris, I think it is, to the Waterways Advisory Board.
Yes. So same situation here. We have one reappointment, and I believe we have two more openings after this. And so we'll continue our outreach for this. But I move that we reappoint Mr. Harris for the term ending December 31st, 2024.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan? Chairman Philios?
Aye. And the motion's carried. Moving on to Historic Preservation, item number eight, the Reappointment of Parties of Burns and Mueller.
Yes. And these are two openings, two reappointments. So this board will remain full. So I move that we reappoint Burns and Mueller with terms expiring December 31st, 2024.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. And the motion's carried. Moving on to the Airport Advisory Board, considering the reappointment of Salazar and Vare.
Yes. We did have many applicants for these two positions, but I think that reappointing these guys would be the best option now. And then next year, we can reexamine the openings that come up and encourage those same people who applied this year to reapply again.
Yep. And it gives us the continuity as well. Okay.
So I move that we reappoint Salazar and Vare to the Airport Advisory Board for, in terms expiring December 31st, 2024.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. Moving on to the Aquafor Protection District, and this is for the reappointment of Sims, Mayani, Scarsello, and Vare.
Yes. So this board is particular where in-state statute is required that each member fulfill a particular role. And they do have one opening. I believe it's for an irrigation district, but they are definitely seeking members for that. But otherwise, these four, I think is appropriate to reappoint them. They are still working hard and doing well for the advisory board.
I agree.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
I don't think that was an actual motion, but, but thanks, Bill. I move that we reappoint Sims, Mayani, Scarsello, and Vare with terms ending December 31st, 2024, for Aquafor Protection District.
Okay. Now?
I second the motion.
Now?
Now.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. And the motion's carried. And all these reappointments are, by the way, are three-year terms. Okay. Item number 11, Idaho Opioid Settlement, Interstate Allocation Agreement with the State of Idaho and the Health Districts, and of course, the B O C C.
Yes. So I don't think that we're, we have anything to do with the Health District portion of it, but we're just going to sign our portion of it.
Our portion of it, yeah.
Yeah, that the county is committing to be a part of this settlement.
That's right. And the Health District is kind of, they're kind of responsible for themselves, right?
Yes.
Because it's already predetermined what they would get.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
So is this just an FYI, or we?
No, it's, we need to sign the allocation agreement.
Go right ahead, then. Do we need a motion?
Yeah. All right. I move that we execute the allocation agreement for the Idaho opioid settlement.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. And the motion's carried. Item number 12, Approve the Administrative Fee Change for the Idaho Transportation Department Vehicle Licensing, in particular, for the Assessor. Allison?
Hello. Thank you. Allison Knapp, for the record. We had come to you guys and asked for the fee increase for the DMV on the admin fee, and that was approved. I T D has actually came back to us and asked if we would consider increasing it one cent so that it is $5.10 for accounting purposes. They feel that that would be much easier transactions for them.
It's so funny. When we approved it, I seriously, I was this close to opening my mouth going, can we just make it an even number? Do we have to do 509? And then when I saw this, I'm like, I think I probably should have spoke up then. But here we are. So.
Here we are. Okay. So, Bill, you want to?
Sure. I move that we approve the admin fee change for the Idaho Department of Transportation Vehicle Licensing and the Assessor.
Second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. And the motion's carried. Thank you, Allison. Item 13, Approve the Quote for the 2022 GMC Sierra 3500 with Robidoux Motors Buildings and Grounds. Greg?
Greg Manley, for the record. I had a request for a, in my budget, for a 2,500 GMC Sierra. You guys denied that. But we had a vehicle go down about two weeks ago. So I've been looking for a vehicle. I found this one. It's the same price as the 2,500. And I'm just requesting that you allow me to get this out of fund balance so I can put a plow on it and keep, keep up with the snow removal.
Now, Greg, you said a 2,500?
I wanted a 2,500. This is a 3,500.
Oh, this is a 3,500. Okay. Yeah, fair enough. Okay.
Look trouble, Dina. What's?
Um, I don't.
Did we take it out?
That's a good question. I thought, okay. So Greg, maybe it wasn't taken out. I don't know. I thought it might have been, I, I thought that one was taken out for airport and one was taken out for building and grounds. But maybe it was added back in. I don't know. Or Greg, did you ask for two trucks or one?
I just asked for one. I asked for a truck and a plow. And you guys approved the plow.
We approved the plow.
Without the truck. Right. Okay. Well.
Let me double check just to be sure.
Okay. Well, I would still suggest we take it out of fund balance. It's exactly what would have happened during the, the process, and I feel it's needed.
Yeah, good enough. Okay. Motion?
I move that we approve the purchase of the 22 GMC Sierra 3500 from Robidoux Motors for Building and Grounds in the amount of $32,983.80.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. And the motion's carried. Item 14, Consent to Assignment of the Lease with Murdo Cameron at the airport, and it's the Murdo Cameron Living Trust. Stephen?
Commissioner Stephen, here for the record. This is a consent to assignment for Murdo Cameron into a living trust, not changing ownership, just moving it into.
Into the trust. Okay. Bill, motion?
Yep. I move we approve the consent to assign the lease of, or Murdo Cameron to the Murdo Cameron Living Trust.
Second. Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Philios?
Aye. Motion's carried. Item 15, Contract Adjustment for Gulf, for the Gulf Stream Road and Utility Extension Project with Party La Riviere. Stephen?
Commissioner Stephen, here for the record. This is that claim that was made to add additional funds to the contract for the Gulf Stream Road we talked about previously. It's in the amount of $52,017.11. Paul Lasca with La Riviere is here, if you'd like to have him speak, to why they would, are requesting this. He is in the room and would like to speak. T O, Corey Siegfert is also on the line, if you have any questions for T O specifically. But it is the airport staff's recommendation and T O's recommendation not to approve the change. But because of the claim, you as the board must make that decision.
Okay. Sarah, would you like to come forward and speak?
Yes.
You can take a seat right here. Just hit the button on the mic, and it'll pick you up.
Leave it right there.
There you go.
Perfect.
So my name is Paul Lasca. I work for La Riviere Construction out of Athel. We won the, we were low bidder on a construction project at the airport in July. This year, the pipe volatility, the pipe market has become extremely volatile, as with everything with fuel prices. But specifically pipe, there was a big winter storm that hit the Midwest where they make the pipe and the resin. And it shut down resin plants in Texas. So what's happened industry-wide and nationwide is that pipe prices and pipe availability has gone up. This has affected every contractor in the United States. I don't know if it's a worldwide thing, but it's a nationwide deal. The issue, if you were to get, say you were to get a painting quote on your house and you agree to it, two days later, his price stands. But the issue with this, we're low bidder on a project, it takes a month or two months sometimes to get awarded the contract, get an executed contract. That's what happens when you have alternates, or you have, have to decide if they actually want to do the project first funding. Well, in that month and a half timeframe between being a little bitter and getting an executed contract, the pipe has went up about $50,000. It's a direct hit to our budget.
So help me understand the dates. When was the winter storm?
February, March of 2021.
Okay. And then when was the bid due?
The bid was due on July 23rd.
Okay. And then the contract was signed?
September 7th.
Okay. So did you have an option to not sign the contract because the price had increased so much?
We did.
Okay. But you signed it anyway?
It's not good practice, industry practice, to try to bail on a contract.
Sure. But at least negotiate then before you sign it instead of coming back?
The owner signed it, but I had worked with the engineer, with T O engineers, in August before an executed contract, notifying them of that not only was there delays, but price increases. The project was supposed to be completed in the month of September. Before we even had an executed contract, it was notified the pipe wouldn't be available till Christmas time.
Okay. And.
We still don't have all the materials.
Sure. And is there a chance that the pipe could go down before construction actually starts? Because my understanding is we're now months delayed?
We probably, we've pushed it all the way back until April, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, there's paving on the project, so we could do the pipe work in, in the wintertime. But then we'd have to have it start the contract, stop the contract, the paving plans, till it back up. So that's why we want to do it all in one shot.
Sure.
So Stephen, is Corey on the line with T O?
Corey is on the line, yes.
Corey, did you care to comment, please?
I think you summarized it, if you can hear me.
Yeah, we can. Go right ahead.
It sounds, okay. It sounded like it was summarized correctly, as far as that the contract was led in mid-July. It was actually signed by the commissioners, it was signed first by the contractor in late August, and the commissioners fully executed the contract on September 7th, I believe. So, and we have a quote from the, from the supplier when the contract was led. He submitted that one. He submitted the letter requesting the increase. And then he also submitted the quote from the supplier towards the middle to end of September, and it shows the pipe increase of the $52,000.
Mm-hmm. Okay. But your recommendation, I guess along with Stephen's, is that we not approve this, the increase?
Well, my recommendation, according, is more based on the contract language, that the contract language doesn't allow for increases after the bid has been opened. If you read the contract language is what I would be more referring to. That within the contract, they signed the bid, and on the front page of the bid, there's a, like, one of the very first items there, it states, and I'll read it out to you guys. The underside bidder proposes and agrees that if this bid is accepted, to enter into an agreement with the owner in the form including, included in the bidding documents, perform all work as specified or indicated in the bidding documents for the prices and within the times indicated in this bid, in accordance with all other terms and conditions of the bidding documents. So basically says that if you sign the bid, it's going to be for the price at the bottom, which was the original price.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Corey, Corey's completely correct. And the contract doesn't allow for price escalation. I just, and you don't, the airport doesn't have to do this. It's more or less asking the county to do the right thing, per se. This is a nationwide issue, and the industry's still learning how to deal with it.
Sure.
There's, here's City of Corlaine's contract with Welch Comer Engineers. They put it in there. Whereas I have a project with the City of Spokane right now, and they don't have it in there. The whole industry is, is learning how to, how to deal with pipe prices. It don't stay the same weekly. They change. It's, it's crazy, and we're trying to figure out how to not take a $50,000 budget loss before we even step on site.
Sure. I, I get that. So it was a little bit unclear when you answered my question before. So you want to get, you want to start on the pipe first and then do the, delay the paving, or you want to delay everything and do the piping and the paving at the same time?
We want to do it all at the same time because it's an aggressive schedule. We've already ordered the pipe and locked in the pipe price.
Okay. So then if the pipe price goes down, then you guys are just kind of?
Well, we've already ordered it, so.
Sure. Sure.
This is, we're not, and Corey has already asked me this. She said, well, how do you know that the pipe supplier's not, not getting us all?
Yeah.
Right.
Well, there's four pipe suppliers I've reached out to in the competitive market.
Sure.
I've reached out to everybody. Reached out to the people that were not low bidder on the estimate and tried, I would have went with anybody. Corey and I worked together in August, trying to find a solution for this.
Sure. I, I guess I wish I would have known back in July and August, when, if the storm happened in February, that maybe we would have known by then. And then, because I just feel like coming to us three months later is kind of late. And you say, do the right thing. Well, we're doing the right thing from the taxpayers' point of view. So, I mean, it's, I feel bad, and we're kind of all in the same boat here as far as, we have canceled a lot of projects because the contractor said, I can't do that. And so I guess that's kind of just where I struggle. I do feel for you, and I hate for you to take a job that has a loss on it. But also, we have to answer the taxpayers, and they're already getting hit, you know, on all these different areas, too. So.
It's, it's not like we waited till December to communicate what was going on, though. A formal claim was put together, or request to Stephen in November, but the email correspondence to the engineer that was starting in August, saying, wait a minute, you know, we can't get this till Christmas. The project's going to be delayed, and prices are going up. So, I mean, it was communicated upfront, and followed the chain of commands to the engineer. And maybe I should have went directly to you guys initially, but.
So what, okay, so you've ordered the pipes, piping. What happens, and you have a contract with your supplier?
Yes.
What happens if the price drops? Are you still locked into the original price?
We are.
So any savings would not be passed on to you?
No, because we've already ordered it and locked it down at price. And we're not looking to make any money on this. The way that City of Corlaine put in their contract was just a dollar-for-dollar deal. La Riviere is not looking to make any money. No markup, nothing, just to cover the budget is all. This doesn't, we're not asking them to make money on it, just to not lose.
Sure.
Stephen? What do you think?
As Corey said.
And why? And why?
As Corey said, the contract states what it states. The, they knew the prices were going up. We didn't know how much until after the contract was signed, how much the prices were going up. But they could have chosen to not do, sign the contract. We could have rebid the project and then redone it then. La Riviere chose not to. They signed the contract. We moved forward. That's where I have, I get held up on that, is they chose to continue even though they knew that the prices were going up, and they chose not to stop and bring that forward without signing the contract first. And that's where I have issues with it. La Riviere's been around about 60 years, and we don't get good reputations with owners or engineers by bailing.
You guys have a very good reputation.
We're not going to bail. We're going to eat it.
Sure.
You have a good reputation.
We're standing here to say, we're going to eat it. We're going to take it out of our budget. We're going to eat it.
Sure.
Because we want to have a good relationship with the, with our community here. We're based here. Ninety-nine percent of our people live in Kootenay County. I mean, this is, this is our home. This is what we do.
Sure.
And to me, if, if La Riviere would have said they couldn't, they were their only bidder, that would have allowed the board to allow us to negotiate independently on its own. But because they signed the contract, we were stuck.
Yeah. I get it.
So that, to me, is the issue of where we sit.
Yeah.
What do you think of, and I'm just going to throw this out, splitting it. They eat half, we eat half.
I would be comfortable with that. I, we're not trying to hurt your company. But as Leslie said, we can't whack the taxpayer either.
No. And my concern, even as I, I throw this out, is that who's going to come next and say, well, give us a break? And are we setting a dangerous precedent by doing that? And I don't know.
I think the fair way to do it contractually, because right now, we don't have a mechanism in the contract to do this. Stephen's right. Right way to do it contractually is to have the engineer obtain independent quotes at the day of bid time, and then at the day of notice, proceed to obtain another quote. That way that they get the information direct and see what's happening.
Right. Is there an issue?
Yeah, I was just going to ask.
That you can weigh on?
No, it's a matter of discretion for the board.
Okay. I, I think that's very generous. I, I can't go along with it. I, you know, I do feel bad, but our taxpayers are getting hit all over the place, and so are the, so I'm not, that's just my stance. So if you guys feel differently, then.
Would you go for a lower amount?
I don't know. I don't know. Hadn't thought about it.
To your point, they signed the contract, I mean, I understand that. But I also realize they've done a lot of work for us, and have done good work for us, at the transit center, parking lot outside.
Yeah, I get it. It's not an easy situation.
It's not.
It's unique, and it's affecting the whole industry, we're all still reacting on how to handle this.
Sure.
Stephen?
It's up to you as the board.
We know that. We know, everybody tells us that.
We've already, I've already started talking with, the big driving factor is actually the largest pipe, it's the 18-inch that Avondale's requesting. We've already had a conversation with Avondale, um, they're not, they're not pleased if they have to pay more. They will be, their, their comment was, was they will not leave the county in a lurch, but they're not exactly pleased with it. So we would have to redistribute cost, whatever it amounts to. My concern, though, is, as Filio said, is what comes next? If you do this one project, what happens next?
Dina? You're the auditor, we make the decision, it's, we, we know that.
I think everything's probably been discussed. We know our budgets are tight, but we also know that we do a lot of construction projects. So, you know, there's, there's non-monetary considerations as well.
Actually, Stephen, what was, did this bid come in under what you had budgeted, what you guys had projected?
Uh, that's, Corey's going to have to answer that one, I don't recall off the top of my head.
Corey, do you have that information?
Can you give me a minute to dig it up, and I will get back on? I just need to look at what my engineer's estimate was.
So while, I'm sorry.
Well, I, I was going to ask if we can handle item, um, 16, because then we can release Ann, who's been here patiently 35 minutes.
All right, let's do that, we'll come back.
So, all right, so Corey, you have a couple minutes, and we'll get back with you.
Get ready, because I'm going to ask for your opinion, too.
Okay, Ann, you want to come up?
It's actually okay, I have a meeting with Dana after this.
Oh, so you're stuck until she's stuck.
You're okay. Nancy, thoughts? Now I'm going to get beat up, watch this.
I appreciate the fact that there was no way that prior to July, that La Riv, La Riviera could know that the prices of the pipe went up, but they knew when they signed the contract. So I'm leaning towards what Leslie said, is they entered into the contract knowing that the prices had gone up, and they didn't mention it then. I would hold them to that. But we also have had a number of people come before the board recently, two that I can think of, with the sheriff's office, that said, costs have gone up, labor has gone up, we want you to amend the contract, and you did.
Now the kitchen? And the, uh, mental, mental health?
Yes.
Food service and medical.
And those were very substantial.
Here's, um, letters I have from Central. Concrete, major concrete supplier in this area. That's what's happening with aggregate concrete. It just lines up with what she was saying.
Corey, do you, did you find anything?
Yes, I did.
Go right ahead.
The, the total bid price for La Riviera construction for the four schedules that we have is $1,240,894. The engineer's estimate, actually, we lucked out in our, um, estimating on this one, it was $1,261,659. So it's $20,765 over what La Riviera's low bid price was, and we had, um, our, I had an assistant that had called around the, um, at that point in time to get a good bid estimate by calling the local pipe suppliers, so we thought we were pretty good with our estimate. So anyhow, it's 20, ours was $20,600 and 765 more.
Okay, thank you for that. Anyone else? That's it? Final thoughts?
I'm good with holding them to the contract, I don't like it, um, but I also have constituents, taxpayers, and, um, the people who are going to end up paying for this.
Make the motion.
Well, I mean, if you guys have a different motion, feel free to make one.
I don't. Honestly.
You don't?
No.
Yeah, this is tough, um, and I think the two examples that Nancy brought up with, was it Vital Core was one? And then the other, and those are fairly substantial for the sheriff's organization. Ordinarily, I would agree with Leslie, but we have a relationship with La Riviera, so if somebody comes to me tomorrow and says, I want the same break, I'll say, but what have you done for us in the past? I know what these folks have done for us, I know they've given us competitive bids. And what I would suggest, and I will make a motion, but I'm going to do it as, as a, as a, you're probably still going to wind up eating most of it, but as a gesture of good faith, um, even though you signed the contract, they do understand what's going on, there's a lot going on that's beyond our control. So I think, let me go back and look at the item. So with regard to item number 15, for the contract adjustment for the Gulfstream Road and Utility Project, uh, I would move that the board make available through the airport budget, a concession of $10,000 toward, what is it, the $50,000 plus that has been quoted for the, uh, the, uh, pricing for the piping for the project.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
No.
Commissioner Duncan?
Nay.
Chairman Filios?
I, I guess I'm outvoted.
Thank you.
Anyway, thank you for your time, thank you, Dina, Stephen, Nancy, Corey especially. Okay. All right, moving on. Thanks for coming, Paul.
Thank you.
Okay, so item 16. Thank you all for your patience, approve the hiring of a contractor for the installation of door codes and cameras, public defender, Ann Taylor.
Good afternoon, commissioners. As you know, we've just moved to our new building, and part of that move was to move the existing door codes that we had. Those door codes are so that when we go up to it, we punch in a code and we don't have to use a key to get in. We use that a lot internally in the old building, it's kind of a bit of security, so that people couldn't just come in and wander about the building, and it's good. You know, we have sensitive information there. When we moved, we had intended to have those door codes moved with us. The company that installs those came on the day of the move and installed one of the five, four, that was supposed to be installed, and they haven't been back, I don't know when they're coming back, and I'm told it's going to cost $10,000 to get them to install equipment we already have. I, because we are now a month and a half into our new building, and because now our doors are just open, when we open them in the daytime and anybody can come in, I don't think it's very secure. I reached out to another company to find out what they could do. Their product is a digital product, it's a newer product, it can be operated with a little keypad thing that you hold up to it, kind of like the sheriff's department has, so it's quicker than punching in a number.
It's like this.
Access card.
Like a fob.
Probably not a fob, but an access card.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
I'd like to move to this system, it's one that we will be trained on and will manage it ourselves, so we can program the cards, we can take the cards away as needed. Right now, building and grounds, they are, they help us with that, but we could just take care of it ourselves. There would be two cameras with this system, too, which additionally helps with security, they would have recording capability. That's something that I think would be pretty beneficial to us as well. But it's pretty imperative, we get those doors so that they operate by a buzzer to let the public in or not let them in, rather than just have the doors unlocked all day long while people are milling about.
Budget?
The, the amount, um, the estimate is just over $20,000, that includes a fifth door, I do not have an answer from the building owner yet. I'd like to do that on the side door, that's our employee entrance door, we all use a key right now, but it'd be nice to be able to use the access keypad thing and just get in that door a little bit faster. So the, the estimate for the new system is $20,659, it's about $1,500 less if we do not get permission for that fifth door. There's a cost with country lock and key as well to help prepare the doors for that, and that's 1,700 just over, but I have to tell them about our taxes exempt status. We would have the expense of $10,000 with the current vendor, so it's an increase in what we anticipated spending. It's one that I think is important, and it's newer equipment.
So the increase is about $10,600?
A little bit more, yeah, because we'd have country lock and key, so I think would be a little bit more than what we expected to spend.
And you have money in your budget to cover this?
I do.
Okay, and then Stephen, do you, does your access card people, would they be able to help at all?
That is our staff.
Oh, okay, so your staff doesn't want to go install stuff?
Uh, uh, we don't want to cut into walls.
Yeah, no worries, no worries, and I don't think the landlord would want you to, so that's fine, I had to ask, though.
Did you cut into walls at the airport?
No, all of ours, all of ours are exterior.
Exterior, that's right, okay.
Gates and stuff, so.
Okay, Bill?
I think we got to do it. If we don't, you, people, put people's security at risk, and that I don't want to do.
Okay. Motion?
You go with it?
Yep.
All right. I move that we approve the, um, installation of the door, uh, door codes and cameras for the public defender's office.
I second the motion.
Bill Brooks?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chairman Filios?
Aye, and the motion's carried, thank you, Ann.
Thank you.
So moving on to our status update. Starting off with facilities expansion, thank you, Dave.
Uh, nothing to report till February.
Oh.
Or as soon as they give us their new, the new design.
Got it.
So that's what we're waiting for.
And this is LCA?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Pack Airport Lease, Stephen?
I have not heard from Wally, he has not responded to my email that I sent the most recent with the 21 cents on. Don't know if he's spoken to any of the board, but.
Not me. When did you send that?
A couple weeks ago, before Thanksgiving.
We got to get an answer.
Can you give him a deadline?
Uh, what deadline would the board like?
Want to give him a week? He's had it for at least two.
Before Thanksgiving, yeah.
Okay. We need a response by next Tuesday. Guys okay with that?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you. Financial snapshot, first Tuesday of the month, go, Dina.
All right, nice and colorful.
Oh, wow, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so, kicking off our new fiscal year, so there's not a whole lot of exciting stuff. Let's start with the second page.
All right.
The second page is going to show you expenses by budget type and elected official, and then on the right, revenue by budget type and elected official. So because we're so just barely into the year, this isn't real meaningful, but I just, as a baseline, I wanted to give you this just to show we're, we're on track or just below. So on the top page, and I want to thank Michelle for putting this together.
Mm-hmm.
In the upper left, Fund 14 Health Insurance.
Uh-huh.
The red, um, squares show what we've spent so far with health insurance claims. So again, we're just getting started with our health insurance claim. Traditionally, the first few months of the year, claims are pretty low. So that seems to be right on track. Down below, budget to actual by elected official, this just shows a pictorial depiction of where our spending is at this point in time, as of today. And then over on the right side, um, an area of interest, um, we have just over 76 positions open right now.
Okay.
So if we look at what we spent on payroll, on the payroll overview at the far right, we've spent about 13% of our payroll budget, which we're on track for 18%, so we're about 5% below, and that number is almost exactly what our open positions are. So we've got about $3.8 million sitting in open positions unspent because we're understaffed.
Understaffed.
So if you look at the graphs down at the bottom right.
Uh-huh.
Open positions by elected official, you can see which elected groups are, um, the most understaffed, and, uh, the corresponding salaries associated with those open positions at the right.
Okay.
So just some news you can use, and what immediate, uh, financial impacts. And as we go on through the year, the, the budget to actual and, you know, other issues as they come up, we'll be monitoring the budget as far as, um, FY '22 and, uh, the, the levy shortage, and, you know, how that's tracking and those sort of things, but right now it's pretty early. So wanted to just give you something that, you know, is meaningful right now. Thank you.
Okay, questions for Dina? And just a clarification for anybody that's listening in, we're chose BOCC, the, that's the 17 departments that report to us. I didn't want somebody to think that, that it was our Office of Six.
Have 28 openings.
28 openings, right.
And there is detail in that open position report under BOCC, it gives the department codes and department names with the number of positions open.
Good job, thank you. Questions for Dina? Thanks, Dina, appreciate it. Okay, and thank Michelle. Okay, so that's the financial snapshot, moving on. Oh my goodness, okay. Impact fee analysis, you have a meeting set up?
Yep, we got a meeting, was it the, I don't have my calendar here.
15th.
15th of December.
That's next week?
Yep, next Wednesday.
Okay, 12:15 with Ann?
Yes.
That's Scott, Gleana Consulting.
Got it. Northlot Land Sale?
I would like, um, direction to go ahead and, and have legal send an official letter, because I'm not getting any response on my own.
That's to the?
Yes, to the property owner.
To the one on the west there?
Yep.
Yep, you okay with that? Let's do it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And by the way, I did call Steve Widmire, who along with Pepper Smock of Windermere Realty, co-own, co-own the Music Conservatory. And so the reason that I called him, I said, you know, there's this sliver of land where if we put the fence up, it's going to come to almost within 10 feet of their structure. So after talking with Greg, I left Steve a couple messages, Mayor Widmire, and said, you know, would you guys consider buying this? Because it would make life a lot easier, so, but I still haven't heard back. But that's where we are right now with that. Okay, Skeet and Gun Club?
I have not heard, heard back from the last appraisal, but my guess is it's going to come back because of the other two came back. So my recommendation is you, as a board, independently think about what is fair and reasonable to have a conversation with the gun club.
And what do you think, it's going to be 21 cents?
Uh, I have a feeling it's going to come back as similar square footage, price for square footage at $2,095 per square foot.
But is that, so, $2.95, that's market rate rental?
Uh, that would be the purchase, if you do that as.
Purchase price.
If you do 10% of that, it'd be about 29 cents.
Okay.
Per square foot.
And we're starting pack off at 21?
Well, you keep in mind, you did that one as a justification, as a nonprofit, as a.
Sure.
Right.
Some other things. You have another one that is, just next to the gun club, is at 25 cents.
Okay.
Going to 30 cents within five years, and then going to market value. Uh, depends on how, there's, the spreadsheet I sent you previously has those examples on there.
Okay.
So you, you need to look at, need to look at them and decide what is fair and reasonable on.
So with, with the 20, was it again, 25, 29?
29 and a half cents per square.
Okay, so what does that equate to in terms of a price?
You're going to look at, for about half a million dollars if you go market.
And when you say half a mil?
To purchase per year.
Do I mean?
To lease per year?
Lease per year.
The lease per year?
To buy off 30 some acres would be about five and a half, about $5 million.
And I had one, one member, a senior member of the club, call me this week, and for 35, 40 minutes, he told me why we should just give it to them. And if, if that's the prevailing thought at the club, I'm sorry, but that's, I told him it's not in the cards.
Yeah, I, I've spoken to them too, and nobody's asked me that, um, to do that, they're just trying to. Yeah, I, I've spoken to them too and nobody's asked me that, um, to do that. They're just trying to really work something out that they can afford, so.
My recommendation is the one that starts at a hundred thousand and goes up over a progressive period.
A hundred thousand a year.
A year. It's significantly below market value, but you're on a path to solve the solution.
So we could justify that.
I, is, the FA is big thing as long as there's a path forward. If there's no path forward, that's the problem you get into. That's when you start having issues.
Okay, so it, so then does it become in essence a lease purchase?
No.
It does not?
It's just a lease.
It's just a straight lease?
Yep.
Now, we could consider a lease purchase, but.
You could consider a lease purchase, but you still would have to lease the property and still be putting more away on top of that to purchase it.
Okay, so, so say it's a hundred thousand a month to start off.
No, a year, a year.
Forgive me. Oh, a year. Forgive me, yeah. Okay, so that's about eighty-five hundred a month. How many members?
So they claimed they had two thousand active members when they came in here and I, I dwiddled that down. I said three hundred in that spreadsheet. So that puts it to four hundred dollars per year.
Per member.
Per member.
Is that reasonable?
That's reasonable, very reasonable, but when they talk about two thousand members, as I've heard it quoted before, it includes all family members.
Yes.
Uh, one, one primary.
Oh, I see, okay.
Their family.
And that's why I put it down to three hundred.
I understand.
Um, but I'm not saying make a decision. I'm saying start thinking about it for when the last appraisal comes in because you can push that back and tell that, but as I've said previously, I've been getting asked questions by some people in the field about why this is taking so long.
I was just going to go there. So what, what do we need to do?
We've been waiting for the appraisal is the issue. That's what we've been waiting for.
And there's still one component missing?
Still one, one section missing.
Yep.
So, but if, just start thinking about what you feel is reasonable.
And the appraiser has told you it's coming?
Yes, it was under review last week. They claimed it should be this week, but we're also supposed to have it two months.
Okay, well, all right. Okay, and then we have to make a decision.
Yes.
And how much time would we give them for a decision?
You're going to be pushed into their next year's lease, so they're going to have probably about one year because that automatically renews soon. Um, so they'll have one year timeframe.
As in January twenty-three?
Yes, most likely.
Well, and they'll need time to reach out to all their members and get a game plan together.
That's right, that's right, okay.
Yep, and so that, that, but we need to make a decision to say, this is your, this is your game plan, Jan one, moving forward.
Right.
Got it. Okay, thank you. ARPA statement. I guess I'm supposed to read this again, okay. Requests for Cootney County ARPA funding are now undergoing evaluation. If you have any questions or comments about the American Rescue Plan Act of Cootney County's evaluation process, please direct them to the arpa@kcgov.us email address. And that concludes our meeting. Public comment?
Yes.
Go right ahead.
Doug of CD Simon Trustee has three comments he left. What have you done for us in the past equals cronyism. Poor guy, but all of us have to adhere to our contracts immediately.
Okay. That it?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you for your comment. Any, okay, so the time is now two fifty-three. Meeting adjourned. Thanks.